Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started at 7 o'clock. We welcome you to our May 2 city council meeting. And in keeping with our longstanding tradition, we'll begin with our moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. I'd ask our city recorder Colin Rigger to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll get into our guest in just a moment. The council at the last council meeting asked me to take a crack at a letter that would address the ever-growing concerns with traffic and accidents on US Route 33. And in lieu of an opening statement, I'd like to share with council the letter that was sent to Birdie White III, who is our new cabinet secretary for the Western Indiana Department of Transportation just earlier today. This is regarding "Traffic Study Request, US Route 33, Buchanan. Dear Cabinet Secretary White, I am writing to you as Mayor of Buchanan. On April 4, 2019, our city family was sadly impacted by the sudden passing of our longtime former municipal court judge and assistant city attorney Matt Himes. Mr. Himes had served our city for 53 years. Matt and his passenger Sarah Downs were killed instantly in this latest of many accidents occurring here with fatalities or serious injuries to motorists, particularly between the Brushy Fork and Keesling Mill Road intersections with Corridor H here in Upsher County. This accident occurred at the Charters Run Road intersection. We all know and have observed that with each segment's completion of our new superhighway, that traffic counts increase along Route 33. To be clear, we are very appreciative of our highway as this ever-expanding four-lane brings new visitors to our area who greatly support our local and regional economies. That said, we in Buchanan are mindful of the DOT's mission statement, which is, it is the mission of the West Virginia Department of Transportation to create and maintain for the people of West Virginia, the United States, and the world, a multimodal and intermodal transportation system that supports the safe, effective, and efficient movement of people, information, and goods that enhances the opportunity for people and communities to enjoy environmentally sensitive and economically sound development. We take, and we know you take, your agency's word, "safe" to be an important part of our DOT's mission. It would be an easy exercise for me to list here the things that local citizens and governmental representatives have observed over the years that would correct our problems and reduce accidents along this stretch of highway. I know you have heard that, one, speed reduction, and, two, more controlled entrances and exits, and, three, installation of stop signs, stoplights, and improved signage, and, four, more policing would curtail the number of accidents. I do not pretend to know the solutions, but, as a local governmental representative whose community has been repeatedly affected by the loss or diminution of lives resulting along our highway, I am compelled to reach out to request your assistance in examining our problems here, trusting that ultimately we can improve upon these issues if we all work together. I will be pleased to share and discuss available empirical data concerning accidents here and introduce you to our public safety players here, that is Buchanan Police Chief Matt Gregory, Fire Chief JB Kimball, and Sheriff David Kaufman, all of whom can far better than I identify and articulate the seemingly never-ending and growing problems along this portion of US Route 33. Our request, and our city council supports my request, that our DOT undertake a reasonable and appropriate traffic study to determine what improvements may be realized to help us better protect lives in our Buchanan-Upsher community. Please feel free to contact me anytime at City Hall, or via my city cellphone, or at my home to discuss our problems. Additionally, my email is, "I look forward to hearing from you, and all of us in Buchanan thank you for considering our request." And it's signed by me as mayor, and of course copies going to the members of council, Matt Gregory, our police chief, JB Kimball, our fire chief, David Kaufman, the sheriff of Upsher County, the West Virginia State Police Buchanan detachment, the Upsher County Commission, Ambi Jenkins, Jerry Arnold, Tom O'Neil, and Callie Cronin-Sams. So, as we promised from the last meeting, that letter has gone out, and we trust that we'll get some favorable response and interaction from our friends and colleagues at the state level. Guests, I don't see anybody who's signed up to attend, but before we introduce, is Dr. Reed here? Did he sneak in? I'm looking for Joe Reed, he's not even here.
No, I don't think he's going to be...
Well, he signed up to speak, but he's not here. But we do have one student with us, so, Mr. McLeod, since you're the last guy of the semester, you want to tell the folks out there in TV land your name, hometown, and major course of study?
Dave McLeod, I'm from New Smyrna Beach, Florida. I'm a junior, play baseball, and business admin major with a minor in camp.
Super. So you play ball for that old man Randy Tenny?
Still do.
Now, he's older than dirt. Just tell him that the next time, next time you're talking, say there's a guy downtown that says he's older than dirt. JB Kimball, are we ready to go?
They're waiting on one.
Okay, so we'll wait until we get into your report here in a few minutes. Does that sound like a game plan? That takes us to our departments and board reports, and first up would be our grant researcher and information coordinator, Callie Cronin-Sams. Callie, welcome back.
Thank you. Well, I just thought I'd start out on Tuesday. I went out with Mike Huff from the DEP. He does the show Environment Matters, and they have featured us before, and looks like will be featuring us again. We did Shoot of the Watershed, and the topic of the story being source water protection. And so, these are just a couple photos. This is Elizabeth, that's in the front, who's been our service caller for the past year. She's done a great job, and one of her friends, another Wesleyan student, so this is where they were entering the water at Hampstead. And then, wrong direction, there's one of our water department employees, Tom Davis, out doing a little fishing. So these will be featured within the video that comes out, probably within the next few weeks, or maybe as much as a month. So we'll be looking forward to seeing that story, and it talks about, you know, the Buchanan River as the source of water for our department, and not only that, but also the number of residences and customers that we have, not only in Upsher County, but in some of the surrounding counties as well, through the public service districts and water associations.
That photograph is sort of Robbie Skinner-esque, isn't it? That's really a bull shot.
Well, thank you, but...
George. Okay, well, he's got competition.
I don't know about that, but, yeah, so I think it'll turn out really nicely. Rob Marver and Barrett Johnson also did some of the whitewater in the kayaks as well, so I think it's going to be a really cool video. They had the GoPro camera attached to the front of the kayaks, and I'm looking forward to seeing the final product. Should be good, not only to promote our clean water that we offer here through the city of Buchanan, but also just as a great place for outdoor recreation here in the county and the city. So that was earlier this week. And Facebook, we, of course, had about our normal number of posts, but the ones that got the most views and shares were the position opening at Stalker for the after-school coordinator. We had the boil water advisories, and we were able to get information about that out quickly through Facebook and through the website and Twitter, and that was shared quite a bit, as was, it's been updated now, of course, to show that that was, you know, a pass, since there's no problems now. Happy Earth Day got quite a few bits of shares as well, and so things just chugging along there. Of course, we were excited for Ambi and her award through the Chamber of Commerce. We also celebrated National Arbor Day as well, even though the weather kept us from doing an outdoor event, but we did get information out that way. Let's see, this is information about the May meeting, schedule changes coming up because of Strawberry Festival, pretty much covers that. And then, later on in strategic, we do have a memo to the press that's in the pocket as well. Came up in supervisors meeting, and was brought to my attention that some of our supervisors are experiencing higher volume or high volume of requests from the press for interviews or information about different projects, which is wonderful, and I could either read the full letter in full, or just kind of give you the overview of it, but in general, we're happy to have the press coverage. Just, they're super busy, so they're just asking if some of those requests could go through me, and then I'll try to help set up an interview at a convenient time, or get the answers to the questions as needed. So that's mostly it for PR, looking over to grants. Still working on our application, along with Buchanan Academy for the 21st Century Community Learning Center, funding for some additional funding for after-school and summer programming at Stalker and Theater. Looking at the transportation alternatives, we've got that intent to apply in for the extension for the Riverwalk, and so that application will be due at the end of the month as well. And then, continuing the letter control grant with the Good Neighbor program has been going well. That's the grant news. And then, of course, Strawberry Festival is nearly here, so just in the upcoming events. Prior to that, we, of course, this weekend, have a veterans program, so Veterans Collaboration Committee and Councilor Alba have been organizing that this Saturday. And we've got a source water protection meeting scheduled, public meetings for the 7th, and Community Unity and Kindness, our initial planning meeting on the 9th. And then it just gets into Strawberry Festival and Mother's Day, and all kinds of fun. Dog Park dedication at the end of the month, and Memorial Day, so it looks like a fun month in May.
It's a busy month.
Busy.
Questions for Callie? Counsel? Thanks, Callie. Appreciate you keeping us posted on things. Jerry Arnold is not with us this evening, and he asked that I read his report, so I take directions fairly well. Jerry says, "I completed the construction of the Police Department Blue Wall that we're going to dedicate next two weeks, Wednesday, May 15th. It's going to kind of add some symmetry to the red wall that we dedicated for our fire guys two years ago. I've been working on the city's ADA transition plan. The Buchanan Post Office has brought an addressing issue to our attention on Ritchie Street. We're looking at it, and we'll send out letters in the same manner as we did for Chancery Street, asking them to attend a city council meeting if they are opposed to the changes. I will be attending National Green Infrastructure Certification Program training for park and/or affiliated professionals in Philadelphia in partnership with the Philadelphia Parks and Recreation Board and the Water Environment Federation, 513 through 516. I have completed 19 hours of online instruction, and will attend a three-day in-person training with a certification exam. Water Department had five leaks last week. They've been flushing hydrants. They have been working on a pump at the intake with precision pump personnel. Sewer Department, Crew 1, continues to work on the Brushy Fork Extension at Westview Acres. Crew 2 is clearing the force main right-of-way and answering sewer calls. Maintenance Crew is conducting routine maintenance, and the plant crew continues to do their routine tasks. Waste Department made extensive repairs to one of the waste transport trailers. The Street Department crews completed work on North Locust Street, began paving on Milkman Lane. They poured the sidewalk in front of the Canal Lounge, I think the American Legion building too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And will complete pothole patching next week. Engineering from Jay Holland, the Water Department, early warning monitoring system Phase 1. The perimeter fencing has been installed. Supply pumps, collection lines, and a pertinent materials will be purchased and installed in the upcoming weeks, as time and weather permits. The Water Department, early warning monitoring system Phase 2, is awaiting a change order approval from the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources, so that the necessary EWMS equipment can be purchased directly from the supplier. Water System Improvements Project miscellaneous tie-ins, cleanups, and punch list activities on both Contract 1 and Contract 2 have begun. Gateway West Engineering and Surveying, Water Department water storage tank inspections, Elizabeth J. Binky Poundstone Riverwalk Extension Number 4. The ITA was reviewed and approved by Western Indiana DOH for formal application submission. Jay will begin the work on formal application next week. Formal application is due by May 24. The Buchanan River Greenway, the ITA, was reviewed and approved by Western Indiana DOH for formal application submission to the Transportation Alternatives Grant Program for funding for the creation of the estimated eight-foot wide by two-and-a-half-mile-long walking biking path from Moore Avenue, next to Alaris, to Parkwood Drive, which is adjacent to the Buchanan-Upsher High School. The extension will begin at Moore Avenue and continue in a southerly direction to Parkwood Drive on numerous tracks of private property adjacent to the railroad tracks. The estimated project cost is $523,500 that will be phased in over four years. And lastly, the North Buchanan Riverfront Park Phase 2 project. Work has begun on Phase 2 improvements at the park, as time permits, with the Street Department. Per the requirements of the grant, the project shall be completed by August 31. We received Grant Amendment Number 3 from the West Virginia Development Office. The grant amendment is for the Phase 2 improvements at North Buchanan Riverfront Park. The approximate cost of the project is $42,853, of which the city of Buchanan will be responsible for $21,426.50. The proposed improvements include perimeter fencing around the grass recreation fields, security cameras, ADA-compliant concrete crosswalks, resurfacing of the outdoor basketball court, and installation of two collapsible bollards at walking path locations to prevent access by vehicles. So that's Jerry's report. Counsel, you could ask me questions about it, but it's all French to me. Takes us up to our Finance Director, Ambi Jenkins. There's an old movie that antedates Ambi that is called Woman of the Year, and it stars Spencer Tracy and Katherine Hepburn, but I think we owe the gal that anchors our City Hall and all things city one more round of applause. You're Woman of the Year. Well, we don't count on that applause every meeting, Ambi. See, Ambi, hope you have to be there.
You should know, right?
Wow, that was a good one.
So I'm going to give you this boring report. For your balances in general fund, money market and checking, you had $870,288, and this is balances at the end of April. You had General Fund CD, $83,704. Stalker View Centers Capital Campaign is at $250,181, and we have two pledged donations that are setting out there. I think as soon as we start work, we'll probably get those. The Municipal Stabilization Fund is at $511,959, and the Coal Severance Tax Fund is at $46,154. Your Insurance Committee, consisting of some council members, myself, we've met twice with insurance agents to discuss employees' health insurance. The committee should have recommendations back to the city council, hopefully by May the 14th. The Housing Enforcement Board met on the 24th and directed that the housing enforcement officers send notices of violations to problem properties. If property owners do not come into compliance, then he's going to start issuing citations. But this week, he issued one citation, because it went through all the warning processes. Five warnings he's issued, and five notices of violation were sent out by certified mail this week. The Consolidated Public Works Board approved expenditures to place a family swing at the North Buchanan Park. That's a swing where the adults and children can ride together. During the meeting, Mr. McKenney of Western College announced that the college is going into a bike-share program, and the Consolidated Board were quite interested in it. I think they want to see how this program works, and maybe extend that out into the community if it's successful. Sort of reminded me, I guess, of a, sort of like borrowing a book from the library and bringing it back kind of theory. The Board also discussed street sign replacement and installing a sign at the end of Trader's Alley to make it one-way at the end part of Trader's Alley, where you can't come out onto Main Street. The Dog Park Committee met last night and discussed planned events for the rededication of the Dog Park that's going to be on Saturday, May the 25th. It'll include a dog contest, and then they also discussed the Pet Festival in September, which will include crates and other activities, and it's been ongoing discussion. And your bills to be approved, the only ones I'll note that we expensed out of the ordinary, West Virginia Strawberry Festival, it's the expense, their $5,000 contribution from City Council. We have theater framing done for $4,025. We expensed the airport allocation, the second half of the allocation of funds, $7,500 to the Buchanan Airport, Upsher Airport. And then, United Rentals, we expensed $4,475 for grants.
Ladies and gentlemen, counsel, are there any questions for Mrs. Jenkins? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve our April financials.
Seven.
A motion by Mrs. Alba, may I have a second or a motion? I have a second by Mrs. Buckloo. Is there, boy, that's still hard to say. Sorry, Pam.
It's okay.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign motion carries. Are we ready, Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
Chief Kimball, Fire Department. How's it going?
Well, good. How about you all tonight? We're here tonight, the first thing I'd like to put on the floor is our pending ceremony, and I'd ask the guys to come up here, Brian, Joey, Lynn, and Ethan.
I hope you guys appreciate the time.
Yeah. The issue's coming up. Mary Alba said this was the ugliest time in the world, girl. I'm taking a play out of the retired Chief Tacy's playbook here. And when everybody looks at those books, that's 3,727 pages of material.
Wow.
Okay, to take a 100-question test. Okay, and it's not all based on what's in those books, it's based on experience, and prior knowledge you have, and all that good stuff. There is a passing score that you have to achieve, and I have three members of our department here tonight, one lieutenant and two captains that passed this promotional exam, or moving on in their career, and then I have a young man over here that has made it through his probationary period of one year. So, this is real close to my heart, and I'm sure Chief Tacy. When Chief Tacy was here, the first promotional exams were given, and I think it was 2008 or 2009. And him and I discussed through the years that we'd probably change that rank structure a little bit as time goes on, as the department grows, and we learn more, and our operations change and stuff. Well, that's where we're at, you know? This is huge. These guys have stepped up. Our department responds to more calls in our district, as I always tell the story, when I started doing the fire reports in 2001, we ran 128 calls in the year of 2001. This year in January, we ran 147 calls. So, that's where we're at 18 years later. So, I'd like to shake each one of these young men's hands and celebrate with them, so...
Absolutely.
I don't know who's pinning them yet, but the family members pinning them, if they must.
We'll save our applause to the pinning, right? Or we can clap for each other.
If we hear a base fall and you get a little bit of blood, that's good. We have Kylie here, with Ethan, Cory with Lynn, Amy and Keila with Joey, and Isaac with Brian.
You need to pick him up so he can be at your left. Well, not him. Yeah, the one.
No, I think I'm up here.
Starting there as quick as you can.
Yeah, mother wanted to get back there while you were looking.
That brings waiter down.
Yeah.
Congratulations, guys.
A little bit more together so we can get one.
Act like we like each other?
Yeah. And if you could look here first, Rob.
You're the most important.
I know. Okay.
Brian, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Come up, hey, Joey. Joey, lay it out, you meet them.
Here's the young man. Come up, you're a scared.
There, I'm especially proud of Brian, who's on the equator.
Is she a Buckloo from way back?
No.
It's your sister.
My sister that died four years ago. My favorite sister that died.
Mayor Nelson, I'd really like to thank you, and I remember, I know what my family puts away in the daily nation. You can see we're a big family.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Well, be safe.
Thank you. I'm taking the guys for beer.
Can we call off?
Yeah, let me real quick. I don't think, you know, I know they're gone right now, but the responsibility these crews have is huge now. We respond to so many different types of incidents now, and they're so well-trained, it makes my job very, and, you know, I want to thank the city for the chance, for them, giving them the chance to advance, and as time goes on, in the next 16 years, the rank structure will probably change again, you know, as we grow, and, you know, that's part of the process. So, thank you all.
Can't wait till it's changed, then not have them.
Hopefully, six more years, it'll change with somebody else, and that doesn't cheat when I get to be 55. You want me to go on about my research? Okay. All right. When you, I had Counselman Skinner came down to the firehouse Saturday, and we were discussing my monthly report, and it seems sometimes there may be some questions, that, you know, maybe you don't understand some of this, so I want to go over some of this. When you opened up the April 2019 report, when you look at the total calls, we responded to 102 calls in the month of April, which adds about our average. We've been responding between 100 and 140 calls a month. So when you look at the city limits, there are 66 calls within the city limits, and then we mutuated Elmore twice. We responded 29 times outside the city limits, but in our first two districts. We mutuated one district four times, and we... Just let that absorb. So if that gives you any idea how serious some of the wrecks can be on Route 33. So that, you got any questions on the call volume for the month of April? Anybody?
Call new data. I like the way you're breaking it down.
This is, this is the software we have, and this is all in relation to the accreditation process. You know, Captain Baxter has a mentor work because he's our accreditation manager. He suggested this because it's what all the other accredited fire departments have. And if you look at, there's a map, I mean, it gives you hot zones where the majority of our calls are, and it also shows you how far we go. You know, go to downtown Weston, we go to, you know, Rock Cave, you know, so we're, we're all over the place. So when you look at 2019 stats, so far this year, we responded 424 times. We've been to Adrian 16 times, Banks District 3. 245 of those calls are in the city limits, eight times to Elmore, 122 times outside the city but in our fire district. 20 times to Warren District, four times to Washington District, and we have been to Weston six times. So.
Believe it or not. Can I clarify one thing real quick? That's dispatch to.
Yes, that's dispatch. I'm sorry.
Doesn't necessarily mean we make it there.
Yeah. Sometimes we go to Weston, they cancel us if they get there and they get it out before. I'll, I'll give you another example. The city of Bridgeport Fire Department is actually responding, they responded to Weston on a confined space rescue the other day. Because they, I mean, the equipment they have and the training of confined space, they're probably one of the premier departments to be able to do that in our, in our region. You know, they respond to downtown Philippi. So because a lot of these volunteer fire departments, during the day, the staffing is just so low that, you know, they know Bridgeport has nine members on shift every day, and they'll pull through four of them to Philippi or that area to help them.
Is it confined space because of a car wreck or something like that?
No, it was a, actually a trench rescue. A trench had collapsed on a guy. And I liked the sewer department getting in the trench or the water department, and it was a long process. It was a, when you hear people talking about, you know, it was a very serious incident. So. So we, most of the confined space calls are of that type, you know, confined space, we'll get trash toys, they get in their boilers and stuff like that, or Core Heart will get in some of their tubing, and they make us aware of it. We have some training, some people operational level, our equipment's kind of limited, but we also know, you know, we got some resources outside that we may have to call, so. You got anything else?
I, I, I really like the, the way, the breakdown of everything.
This, this what we're going to start getting here every month?
Every month. I think this is great. I think this is really, it really educates us more when it comes up for a time for us to buy a piece of equipment, hire another firefighter, you know, this, this is readily here.
And, you know, it's, a lot of people, I like looking at the maps because it shows hot zones where the majority of your calls are. It also shows the spots that we go to outside, you know, not that, other departments mutuate us also. And we're going to be going through a process where we're grading our mutuate here shortly. You know, what are we actually getting on mutuate, mutuate? Are we getting well-trained firemen? How many are we getting? So we may be manipulating our mutuate a little bit, you know, to adjust it, because we came up with an effective response force. And if we're achieving that, but it's got to be in a timely manner, how quick do we get help? You know, if we page a certain department as an automatic aid department and it's taking them 20 minutes to get here, and then when they get here, they only have one person, are they actually able to provide us what we need? So we're going to be grading that system and probably manipulating a little bit to adjust that and see, see, you know, what goes, as time goes on, you're going to see a lot of changes.
The thing that pleases me the most from what you've said tonight, our folks, especially our favorite players out there in social media land, that, oh, that firing police accreditation stuff those guys are doing, that's just, they're just looking for a trophy, it's just window dressing. Every time I talk to you about the accreditation effort, and every time I talk with Matt Gregory, you both tell me that as a result of this exercise that we've been going through the last, going on two years now, that we become better every time you go to do something. And that's, that's what it's all about.
You know, it's kind of like I've always said, you're, you're basically dissecting your whole system to figure out what you're really good at and what you're, you're not. And, and as grown people, we have to realize, hey, if we're not good at this, we either have to get better or find somebody that can assist us and be better. You know, I mean, we're not, we can't do everything in the world, you know, because if you do, you're not good at any of them. So let's find out what we're really good at, what people, you know, like I was speaking of mutuate, what can people actually provide us and what do we provide, you know, mutuate the other way, so.
Well, you know, Joe knows, and all your guys know, if this was an easy undertaking, we wouldn't be the first in West Virginia to do it.
No. And actually, I'm going to a professional fire chiefs meeting next Thursday in Charleston, and I'm sure I'll probably get several questions. I've had calls from Bridgeport and a few other departments around the state asking me questions about the process.
Sure.
And, you know, this is not something, you know, not to diminish the need for pure volunteer fire departments, but the accreditation is, is a big thing. And for somebody that's not getting paid to sit down and try to attempt it, I, I, I think every department should do a self-assessment. That tells you what you're actually providing. If you can't do a self-assessment, you're scared of it. And that's what I've always said. You know, at first I was scared of it, and I'm like, but it really pinpoint what you're capable of doing. And, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to skew the thought of the public if you could provide this when you really can't.
Right.
You know, and, and that's the worst thing, you know, the, the, the public thinks you're coming to save them. And if you only got one person, can you actually do what you say you can do?
Or have your option.
We appreciate the support, and like I said, the, the, the volunteer organization here shortly will be taking their promotional exams, like I spoke to the council a while back, they actually agreed to do the same process as our career guys, which is great.
112 lockouts, is that houses, cars? What is that?
It's mostly, some of it may be houses, but most of it is cars. We actually provide, we have an unlock system, and we go and provide unlocks at like for local businesses to help people if there's nobody else that can help them. Some of those may be, you know, may have a dog in them, may have, we, we went clear out to Nebo one day, nobody could help a lady, her kid was locked in a car. So we went and cleared out to Nebo and got the child out of the car.
So you can tell a story about that. I was actually in Bridgeport about probably three months ago, I was over there, T-Wells connection pause, I was there teaching. I stopped at a coffee shop in way out down, there was a lady that was panicking. She had locked her keys in her car and nobody would help her. She would call a wrecker service and would not get an answer, it'd be four hours. She, she called the, all the emergency services around that area, and then none of them do it. None of them would even come up and give her a hand, they'd just give her phone numbers. She was from Maryland, she was a visitor. She was spending money in their community while she was there, traveling through, had family there, and nobody was willing to help her. That kind of gave me a new perspective on that call. I mean, at times that can feel like a nuisance, but sitting on the CDB board, I know there's been a couple of times we've assisted people up Carolina Street that were from out of town, and they've actually commented about that to other people, so. While sometimes that, that call title is, it's a knee-jerk reaction, just, just think it through for a minute. We do have some habitual offenders and we may have to deal with them over time, but I know, if, if you unlocked your three people's vehicles that were spending money in your community, saving them $75 from a wrecker service, that, that means a lot to people.
Good, good ambassadorship. Appreciate it.
I've always said, when you can have a face-to-face call with somebody that's not a true emergency, you get a lot of positive feedback from them. You know, if, if these calls are, like one night we had to refuse one because we, it was after a storm and we were scattered everywhere and we didn't have time, nobody was in the car, you know, if somebody had been in the car, that's an emergency then. But, you know, that's just a service that we try to provide to the community here when nobody else is there to help you other than breaking your window, you know, and we've never failed to get in one, so.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Any other questions?
Questions for David, for Joe?
Thank you.
Be safe, guys. We thank you for all you do. Next up, the city attorney, Tom O'Neil. Tom?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. By way of report, I've been helping primarily other departments and boards collect their matters that have been before their plate particularly, particularly you'll be dealing with the Gately-West agreement with DOH, which was a subject of, been at my time over the past, since our past report. We've had a meeting the other day pursuant to the Housing Enforcement Board, our request for a particular problem property on Randolph Street, and reporting a number of rights of way for the benefit of, I think it was sewer rights of way, if I'm mistaken. I was requested to give a brief report on a review of a couple of our existing ordinances with respect to our bicycle friendliness downtown from Consolidated. And with, and I believe those ordinances are included in your packet. Let me try to find, turn the red page here. Yeah, they are, they are in here. Ordinance numbers, the ordinance is in particular 108 and 268. Ordinance 108 is our general traffic ordinance, but it includes a section applicable towards bicycles. The primary gist, the most substantive part of that ordinance provides that bicycles are not permitted on sidewalks on Main Street. However, elsewhere within the corporate limits, they are permitted, bicycles are permitted on sidewalks if they do not present an obstruction or an endangerment to pedestrians. Otherwise, the regulation of the use of bicycles within city limits, I would characterize it as pretty reasonable and prudent regulations. It clarifies that, for instance, all bicycles are subject to the same rules of the road as motor vehicles, that bicycles using streets are to stay as far to the right as possible. I mean, you have some common, common sense things like that. Ordinance 108 was passed in 1961, and it has held up pretty well. The other ordinance I was asked to review, I was ordered to 268. It doesn't really deal with bicycles, but 268 does deal with skateboards. And it is, in effect, a prohibition on the use of skateboards, rollerblades, roller skates, heelies, things like that, within the commercially zoned areas of the city with, with criminal penalties, as a matter of fact. And that is an ordinance from 1994 that I'm sure the mayor may recall.
About 12 years into.
I was in high school at the time, and I recall the controversy at the time that led to, as a teenager then.
A picture of you having how young you were.
I'm 41, for the record. That ordinance is, is a much more straight prohibition. And if the, if the, now again, it is limited to the commercial zones of the city, if the, if the city would, to respond to the, to Consolidated's request, if the city was looking to improve friendliness of non-motorized transportation, there's probably some modification of the skateboard ordinance. There's room for modification there. I don't know what we can do with the vice, with ordinance 108 with respect to bicycles that wouldn't present, I don't know that permitting, you know, the only prohibition on bicycles again is on Main Street itself. Certainly if the council feels like bicycles are, you know, should be permitted on the sidewalks on Main Street, you know, that is a change that could be made, it would be a policy decision for the council. That's really the only kind of room, I use this term, not qualitatively, but room for improvement that exists under our current regulatory scheme. There is nothing in either one of those ordinances or any other ordinance of which I'm aware that prohibits bicycles on the, the walk trail or the rail trail or anything like that. So I think in that respect, we could characterize ourselves as bicycle-friendly community, and that's my report.
There's been no, not one single person, public or from Consolidated Public Works Board, has asked to revisit the skateboard ordinance. But as we think about Lacey Ramsey's asking that a bike parking area be established up near Jesterland, and as CJ Rylands has tried to advance this bike share program for the three years he's been on city council, and now with the college.
That's why I have to go somewhere.
We, we, we want to, I think we need to revisit the ban of bicycles on Main Street.
I, I don't mind, I, I agree with you, but I don't, I don't like, I, I just see it, bicycles and people on the, with their benches and other things, or flower beds and whatnot on, when I go, come home on Saturday night or Sunday night from out in the country, you can't get through Derek Lane.
Yeah.
Okay? So my, my point is, I don't, I don't think bicycles should be allowed, or skateboards, or rollerblades, or any of that, on the business down.
And that's, and again, just to clarify, that's only on, it's only, they're only prohibited from the sidewalks. A bicycle is permitted on Main Street.
Yes.
In the street.
Yeah, but not on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
And, and.
Now, except, now, I will say this, the ordinance does contemplate that, you know, you may need to, you know, cross a sidewalk to get from the street to your destination, and it provides, so, I mean, you can, you're not prohibited from the use of the sidewalk to, you know, as a, you know, as essentially a right of way to, you know, get to your final destination. So if, for instance, there, a bike share station were to be placed, you know, somewhere on, you know, let's say here on this opposite corner across North Flora Street, yet there would, we would not need to modify the ordinance in order to permit bicycles to cross the sidewalk on Main Street. That would be fine, as long as they went straight to, straight into the street. Now, then the question becomes, do we want, you know, do we want bicycles, I mean, do we want to see an increase of volume of bicycles on Main Street with motor vehicles? Does that present a safety hazard? And otherwise, I mean, that's just, and that's a policy decisions for the council and, you know.
That's what I'm thinking about when my, in a couple of years when Keegan's 10 and he wants to ride his bicycle from my house to Jesterland to go play some video games, he has to ride on Main Street. He's like this big, he's not riding a, a road bike 40 miles an hour, you know?
Technically, you're correct. However, I'm not aware of the last time a citation was issued for violation of these provisions.
We, we, we had a councilman back in the 90s who would run up the street every time he saw a bike on Main Street and ask for the police. I, I am, we'll remember that. And we, we don't.
Was that Abraham Lincoln?
We don't, we don't want to return to those days.
What if he, what if he would allow just?
Anytime he wants to go.
Walk the path.
That's what I was going to ask. That's what I was going to ask.
Just straight on the sidewalk.
I'd love to do it.
If I'm not just to get off and walk on the bike.
We need, we need to gravitate to being more inviting, more inclusive, more healthy.
What he's saying, you know, my grandson might want to do that one at the time he's 10 too, but, you know, why not let him get off their bikes and walk on the sidewalk?
Well, or you could, or, or other option is to modify the ordinance to provide that only bicycles with a certain diameter size wheel is prohibited from the sidewalks of Main Street and particularly small.
That's what I'm thinking about when my, in a couple of years, when Keegan's ten and he wants to ride his bicycle from my house to Jesterline to go play some video games, he has to ride on Main Street, he's like this big, he's not riding a road bike forty miles an hour, you know.
Technically, you're correct. However, I'm not aware of the last time a citation was issued for violation of these provisions.
We 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 had a councilman back in the nineties who would run up the street every time he saw a bike on Main Street and ask for the police, I, Ambby will remember that. And we don't.
Was that Abraham Lincoln?
We don't, we don't want to return to those days.
What if he, what if he would allow just?
Anytime he wants to go.
Walk the.
That's what I was gonna ask. That's what I was gonna ask.
On the sidewalk.
If I'm not just get off and walk on the bike.
We need, we need to gravitate to being more inviting, more inclusive, more healthy.
What he's saying, you know, my grandson might want to do that one at the time, he's ten too, but, you know, why not let him get off their bikes and walk on the sidewalk, you know?
Well, or you could, or other option is to modify the ordinance to provide that only bicycles with a certain diameter size wheel is prohibited from the sidewalks of Main Street and particularly small bicycles, bicycles with train wheels or something like that, you know, can be operated. You know, again, I don't think there's any, you know, we don't have a rash of citations coming through the municipal court, you know, for violations of this ordinance, but if we want our, if we want our enforcement, if we want to, if we want to have our enforcement profile match what our laws are, then, you know, the council may want to consider an amendment to.
Why don't we look at this a little, we're not going to make any decisions on this tonight, let's continue to look at the ordinance and see if there's room for improvement that would placate the folks. We're going to see expanding bicyclists, there's no question about it. And as we connect the dots between downtown and the college campus with this River Trail extension that we're looking at, we want to encourage folks to be on that trail, whether they're walking or riding bikes, and we want them down.
Or running.
Yeah, well, sure, but cyclists, they're gonna come in with their little fanny packs with their dollars in it and spend money in downtown. We want to have places for them to park their bikes.
You know, they're at the four way stop there, you know, the the big one where the traffic light is, they can, there's a crosswalk there, okay? That's safe if you're paying attention, okay? It really is. I see joggers, I see people riding bicycles, just people crossing and they wait their turn till everybody stops, okay? Now, if the kids need to, a place to store their bikes, remember Dr. Reed had this thing about bicycle racks and and stuff, we've got one in the back of our church. Of course, we don't have anybody young enough to ride a bicycle that comes to our church. Maybe they could put bike racks up out there at Chester Place. What is it called?
Chester.
Chester Line, I'm sorry.
But we can call it Chester Place in Long.
No, it sounds like a law. Chester Line.
The only, the only other thing I'd include in my report is a request that our next meeting, that we include an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Questions for Tom?
To discuss what, Tom?
Pending litigation.
We don't need to do that.
We don't really do that.
Okay, good.
No, not tonight.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Get you back up here in a couple of minutes. Correspondents and information, remember, we've got a whole host of meeting change updates. Planning Commission is having its, the meeting before it will present the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan, they are meeting, and I want to say it's the council chambers.
It is. I just read it.
Community and training here, June ten, twenty nineteen. There is a notice of rescheduled meeting of the city council and the sanitary board. We're bumping up by two days, remember, our next meeting is not two weeks from tonight, but it's twelve nights from tonight, Tuesday, May fourteen, due to the strawberry festival. We are rescheduling the June twentieth meeting, that's a state holiday, West Virginia Day, from Thursday, June twentieth to Tuesday, June eighteen. And then the July fourth meeting is also on a Thursday this year, we're bumping it up two days to Tuesday, July two, so we'll start our new fiscal year just a day into the next meeting. There's the Earth Day proclamation that we worked up, the Arbor Day proclamation that went out that Cali described for us, and then there's the letter of understanding that was executed between the city of Buchanan and West Virginia Wesleyan College that allowed our fire departments and police departments to engage in training exercises concerning the three buildings that were just demoed this past week by the college down on Randolph Street. The consent agenda consists of three items that I would solicit your approval about. It's the approval of the minutes in the last regular meeting of April eighteen, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and lastly, the approval of payment of our general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Mrs. Buckloo, may I have a second to her motion, a second by Mrs. Albaugh, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and or vote, first, approval of financing for the replacement of our computer server. Ambby, you want to tell us about that?
This is probably pretty simple, as you recall, we opened the bids, the server costs fifty two thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars. I asked for quotes from various financial institutions in town and or vendor, and the rate that came back the lows, which was a pretty good rate, is two point nine seven for three years. That would make it about a fifteen hundred dollar a month payment, but that's going to be divided among the four departments because this server does our payroll, our general ledger, our utility, it's the, it's the workforce. So I would recommend that you accept the.
How many years was the term?
Three, just three years.
Two point nine seven and three years, that's a, that's a good rate.
Yeah, from community.
Nice term to pick this up.
Community bank.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion that we allow Mrs. Jenkins to begin that necessary process to finance the acquisition of our new computer server. So I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, may I have a second, I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh, is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Takes us down to F two, which is the approval of the revised arrangement, letter of agreement with city attorney, Tom O'Neil. If you'll indulge me for a couple of quick minutes, I'll read you that letter that's in your packet. Letter's dated May one, twenty nineteen, to Mr. Thomas J. O'Neil, regarding modification to legal services agreement. Dear Tom, at the outset, please allow me to observe that our city and our municipal utility boards appreciate your service as our city attorney since October one, twenty sixteen. During your past two and a half years plus of service, Buchanan has continued to advance and progress while benefiting from your sound legal counsel, and for that I commend you. With last month's sudden passing of longtime Assistant City Attorney Matt Himes, a void now exists respecting the tedious legal work that Matt had long performed for our city. As real estate practitioners go, Matt was simply the best. Our organization is somewhat at a crossroads insofar as attempting to cover the work previously performed for us by the irreplaceable Matt Himes. I have terrific confidence in your abilities to perform those additional services. Pursuant to our recent conversations and subject to the formal acceptance and approval of our city council during our May two council meeting, I propose that your role and duties as our city attorney that were generally set forth in the legal services agreement executed in October of twenty sixteen be expanded and modified effective of May one, twenty nineteen as follows. One, all legal services previously performed by our assistant city attorney will henceforth be undertaken by you, and our city will not at this time seek to employ a new assistant city attorney. In essence, you will absorb the duties and be responsible for performing the work previously performed by Matt Himes. Two, you will perform a minimum of thirty hours of legal services weekly for our city and our four municipal utility boards. While your attendance of all utility board meetings will not be compulsory, our council and boards believe that your attendance of and participation during as many board meetings as possible is highly recommended. We also, we all might observe that there is an ever increasing legal element associated with so many things that we undertake as a city, and particularly as we discharge our utility functions. You will promptly develop a form to be approved by Ambby Jenkins and me that will be submitted weekly to Mrs. Jenkins and maintained by her, logging and detailing your thirty hours weekly, your thirty weekly hours of legal services. Naturally, time expended to all meetings will be included in this legal services log. Occasionally, and as you already well know, there are additional municipal board, commission and committee meetings that sometimes will require your attendance and participation, including but not limited to the planning commission, zoning board of appeals, police and fire civil service commissions, historic landmarks commission, animal care and control commission, Stockard Youth and Community Center Board and Housing Enforcement Board. Three, your primary points of contact for performance of your legal services as city attorney shall continue to be, A, the mayor, B, the city's director of finance and administration, and C, the public works director. However, any of our city supervisors or city council members may directly contact you for legal advice and consultation regarding municipal matters without advance approval. I request that I be kept abreast of matters impacting our city. Naturally, full communication is important as we collaboratively administer and discharge the many functions of our city. Four, while your annual compensation of fifty thousand dollars shall not change at this time, you shall become immediately entitled to full city and state fringe benefits, including our city health and life insurance coverage for you and the qualifying members of your family, as well as participation in the state retirement system. Mrs. Jenkins will work with you to expedite your qualification for these benefits. Five, you understand that your position as city attorney is one that continues to at all times be subject to the will and pleasure of the mayor and city council. If this letter of understanding and agreement meets with your approval and acceptance, please execute your signature on the duplicate originals of this letter. Upon receipt of the executed letter, I will immediately present it to the city council for the council's consideration and hopeful acceptance. I think it's fair to say, Tom, that we all count on your many years of quality service to our city going forward. Very truly yours, signed by me as mayor. Copies to the members of council, Ambby Jenkins, Jerry Arnold, Arnold, and the Buchanan Utility Boards. Ladies and gentlemen, we've talked about this, and I think this is a soundest way for our city to continue to incur, receive the excellent legal services that Tom has provided now for the past thirty one months. I would entertain a motion that we approve this new arrangement. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas and a second by Mr. Rieger, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F three, which we have already discussed, and council can tell me whether I'm on, correct on this, the recommendation to review the regulations of the bicycle ordinance, we'll continue to develop some firmer recommendations, and we'll get back to you on that, does that sound good, Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, sir.
Okay. F four, approval of the Gateway West, West Virginia Department of Highway's construction agreement. Jay is not here to speak about this, but it was in his engineering report that was incorporated in Jerry Arnold's report. This is, we got to get this approved so that we can get started on this project, hopefully about the first of June. It's in your packet, I have reviewed it, Jerry Arnold has reviewed it, it's Jay Holland's recommendation that we adopt this. I would entertain a motion that we approve the Gateway West, West Virginia Department of Highway's construction agreements. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh and a second by Mr. Rieger, is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I will call for that question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F five, Kathy Gregg, who many of you know as the longtime, gosh, Dave, I think Kathy, until she semi-retired a year or two ago from the college, had probably put close to forty years in at Wesleyan.
Yeah, she started in the late sixties.
Yeah, I think that's right. She has long served as the chair of the Wesleyan Landscape Committee, she is on our city landscape committee, she's a biology professor emeritus, has her PhD in horticulture, biology, plants, flora stuff. She has requested, and understand, we don't own this property, but we have a year to year lease for a buck a year with Wesleyan to maintain our learning trail. Kathy asked me if the city would designate her as our curator, the job doesn't pay anything, but we would designate her as the curator of the learning trail along the Elizabeth Poundstone Riverwalk Trail. I told her I would put it on the agenda and encourage the council to identify her officially as the curator of our learning trail.
She's also a expert on orchids.
Yeah.
She, she. Nationally, not alone.
She can identify, I think, any plant you would put before her. I'd. I'll make that motion. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas and a second by Mrs. Buckloo. Did you like that? Could have used it every time.
You want to borrow my cane this time?
Is there discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F six, we're back to Cali, approval of a new communication policy with the news media. Cali, you want to run us through this drill and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Like I mentioned in the report, Jerry Arnold came to me after the most recent supervisors meeting and mentioned that they had just seen himself and some of the other department supervisors had seen an increase and, you know, requests directly to them with questions about projects and what we're up to with the city, and they, of course, appreciate the press and there's no fillings whatsoever, but they're also busy, so just concerned that it was taking away from some of their productivity and efficiency and us, if I could maybe help by taking some of those calls, and then, of course, there's going to be instances when members of the local press corps, which we work well with, and I think have good relationship with, I want to want a direct interview with some of them, but maybe I could help set that up or get some questions answered in advance and just try to streamline it a little bit. I could read you the full letter, or you would be welcome to read it if you like, or however you want to proceed.
Let's, let's read this letter.
It said, this is a memo to our local press corps, good afternoon, I and the city as a whole appreciate the great, great relationship we have with all of you and wish to see that continue. This memo should in no way be taken as an indication that we are in some way upset with any members of the local press corps, rather, we as an organization are striving to streamline the way we handle your requests to increase efficiency. As our department supervisors and staff work in the field and are generally directly involved with their department's respective operations, they are not always able to easily and quickly respond to requests from the press. Fortunately, our downtown is thriving with plenty of newsworthy projects, and we understand you have questions and are out doing your job. An active free press is good for the city and all of our citizens. We applaud you for doing what is often a difficult and sometimes even dangerous job. To better respond to your requests without losing productivity on city projects, please email me or call me first, preferably with your list of questions and or an interview request for a department heads, including Jerry Arnold, Director of Public Works, Jay Holland, City Engineer, Buck Samples, Sanitary and Stormwater Supervisor, Sewer Supervisor, Kelly Arnold, Water Department Supervisor, Ambby Jenkins, Director of Finance and Administration, Tom O'Neil, City Attorney, Deborah Brockelman, Stockard Youth and Community Center Director, Bryson Van Dostron, City Architect, Jeff Wamsley, Waste Collection and Recycling Supervisor, Brad Hawkins, Streets and Parks Supervisor, and Casey Gilbert, with the Buchanan Volunteer Center Coordinator. You may reach out to me on questions regarding grants, websites, social media, as well as public relations. And then I had a note, a policy for the mayor and city council members, please continue to contact Teresa Summers for interview requests with the mayor or city council members. If you have a list of questions you would like answered for the interview or story, please email those to Teresa and to me. If you already have a working relationship with the mayor or a member of the council, this should not keep you from contacting them directly when they have time. And then the policy for police and fire departments for non-emergency related stories such as personnel changes, policies, special programs, et cetera, please reach out to me first, but in the event of a public emergency or criminal investigation, Chief Gregory, when looking at police and Chief Timble, with fire department, will remain the points of contact.
I think this is a sound policy, but I do want to make it abundantly clear that in those instances where these excellent young women are trying to do a story, and it's, they've got their deadlines and the whole bit, I have a great relationship with our press that goes back decades, you can always contact me, any time of day, whether it's my phone, email, banging on the door, I will, I will tell you what I know about a particular matter, and if I don't know, I will reach out to those that do and get back with it. I think it's important to recognize that there is a little bit of a difference between contacting, say, Deborah Brockelman or Jeff Wamsley out of Waste Collection versus an emergency situation where they are trying to cover the details of an accident or a fire or those kinds of things, and they're doing their due diligence, they need to be able to get ahold of somebody with the police, fire departments immediately without going through this protocol. And I think you've covered that in this, Tom. And I think you've covered that in this, Tom.
I hope to, so I would agree with what you just said.
So, since we've got our three lovely ladies of the press, do any of you have any questions or comments about this? It's not intended to encumber, it's, I think it's just a matter of trying to streamline things. Access to me and the council, and in emergency situations with our two chiefs, and I think Ambie generally is that way, too. You got, you know, I don't think you've been bashful in the past about hollering for Mrs. Jenkins at City Hall. She's, she's always available, too. So, council, what are your thoughts on this policy?
My, my thought would be, David, to table until we have our two other council members here. I like to hear what their comments are about it, and I think it's a, it's an important process. I mean, we're asking basically to enhance or facilitate the communication. That's why, that's why I look at it. But I think Robbie oughta, I'd like to hear his comments on the same with CJ.
Mr. Thomas says, "Request that we table this until the May fourteenth meeting. I would entertain a motion that we table it and replace it on our agenda for May fourteenth."
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. I have a second to his, I have a second by Mrs. Buckloo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
You can always say Mrs. Big.
I'm not going there. All those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And that takes us down now to comment, to comments and announcements to the city council. Mrs. Albaugh, we will start with you.
Okay. It's not a lot of you in here. What happened to everybody? That's all right. Anyways, I want to remind you about the veterans program, recognition program at Presbyterian Church, May fourth, that's a Saturday. You're all are welcome. We're gonna have cookies, sandwiches. It's at two o'clock.
Free food.
Yeah.
Yay. What's the date?
May fourth, at First Presbyterian Church.
Two to four.
Two to four. And you don't have to be a veteran to come. If you've never seen this particular type of program, come, come join us.
I'll wear my flag tie instead of my fire.
I'd really appreciate that, David. Either that or your Westland tie. I like that.
Well, I'll wear that to the country and then put the Uncle Sam tie on for you guys.
And also, the American Legion and the Auxiliary is going to, we are going to be selling Strawberry Shortcake on the Friday and Saturday at the American Legion Building, so please share if you're out and about. Come eat Strawberry Shortcake. It's a fundraiser, it's the only fundraiser we do, and we definitely need a fundraiser, and we greatly appreciate everybody's help.
Anything else, Mary? That's enough, isn't it?
Uh huh.
That's a good night. Mrs. Buckloo.
Okay.
That's the sixth time.
All right, okay. I'll just remind everybody that the Stockard Youth Center is gonna have a Mother's Day pancake breakfast at CJ Maggie's on May eleventh from eight to ten, and this is going to benefit the Stockard Youth and Community Centers camp buccaneer, which we have during the summer. It's five dollars a ticket. You get pancakes, sausage, and a drink for that. And also, I am having a meeting Monday evening, May the sixth, here at five-thirty-ish for the Fourth of July stuff, which will be July fifth.
Sneaking right up.
And also, I want to remind everybody about mowing their grass and it going out into the streets. That's a no-no. I think there was already somebody killed on a motorcycle in West Virginia this year because of grass out in the street when the motorcycle hit the ground. And also, it'd be nice if people could have gravel in front of their homes, because that can be dangerous also for older people walking or kids riding bikes. That gravel will make them slide, and there's a lot of that in town, right in front of their properties, that they can clean that up, but not sweep it out in the street, so.
Or in the gutter.
Yeah.
Anything else, Pam?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Rylands is not here. Mr. Skinner is not here. That takes us to J. David Thomas.
Just a few comments. Last week, I was sitting out on my patio, and there's a four-way stop at the Hart in Smithfield, and there were a couple of people walking their dogs on Smithfield, and then what Yukon loomed through that stop sign on Smithfield going towards town. And it was probably going at least sixty miles an hour. A couple of the people that were walking came up to me, and they said they couldn't believe how fast it was going, they couldn't get the license number. But I called nine-one-one to report it, and I know my area with the four-way stop is not the only area in the city where people simply disregard the stop signs. And they also go way too fast in residential areas, and it's, it's dangerous. Also, with the warm weather coming, there's gonna be more people down using the park on Park Street, and I get complaints oftentimes, and I ask them to call the police department, that we really need to put a sign up there and maybe lower the speed limit to have people watch out for children that play and stuff. I think it's something we ought to be looking at, David.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thanks, David. Dr. Reed, before I ask Colin Rigger to speak, did you want to address council, and we're trying to get out of here tonight, but if you've got something important to tell us, we'll recognize you.
Take just a couple minutes.
Sure. How about, he's got his stuff in the packet about the idea of, it sounds like the folks at the other end of the street weren't quite as enthusiastic as what we might have hoped, but we'll try to accommodate it. Well, I don't know what they told you. They seemed to be willing, was my impression. They suggested specifically consider students selecting topics. I suggested maybe it doesn't need to be a joint station, maybe it needs to be separate. And whatever topics that were selected involved the students themselves being, be involved in making it happen. So, those are specific suggestions I got from them. My idea is that, first of all, to involve the kids of both levels, high school and college, and community affairs, and awareness of civil action. And then, maybe even the professors would grant a little extra credit for what they do, I don't know. We've had various exercises like this in the past, Joe, where we had Dr. Rupp's classes present things down to the community and training room, and it was highly engaging. I don't think the council has ever had any, anything but a good experience with doing things that way. We would welcome it. One of the, one of the specific things they suggested adding is a possible topic, and these are just possible topics listed, was the 2020 census. If anybody wants a copy of what I suggested, I have other copies here. And you're talking about a fall, is that right? After the college teacher, October, or something like that?
In the, in the package?
Yeah. I think we.
Yeah, it's in the package.
Questions, your Dr. Reed? Well, you'll be back to tell us more about it as the summer progresses, right? I will try to accommodate however I can. Sure. Well, I think we're all for it. Council, could you support this presentation by school and college folks? Would you be in favor of a joint or separate? I don't, I don't see any problem with a joint presentation. You know, we don't get into conducting business or anything like that. If it's just observing the presentations, I think it's a great joint exercise.
Well, we used to meet jointly anywhere the fifth, thirtieth of the month.
Well, that's a secret attempt, too, to get the whole meat together. Well, no, it was always publicly between the, one time there, one time there, back in the old. There's a conversation for one hundred, please. Anybody have any questions, your Dr. Reed? We'll continue to work with you to help make it happen. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rigger.
I have a letter to read to the council, to the mayor, and to those present. It is with much regret that I write this letter, but I feel it to be, you guys get your cameras ready. Feel it to be in the best interest of the city of Buchanan that I resign from the position of city recorder effective May third, 2019. Recent significant health issues, as well as work and family obligations, have disallowed me from being as involved in board, committee, and council meetings, as I would like to be in a position as crucial as this one, which has placed additional burden on city employees. Unfortunately, my schedule doesn't appear to clear up for the foreseeable future, and I do not wish to place continued undue strain on administrative staff members. It is best for me to make way for another individual who will be able to make all of the meetings and better assist the mayor and council in their various obligations and duties. I would like to also take this opportunity to express my gratitude toward the people of Buchanan for showing great kindness to my family and I, as well as to the members of the council, the mayor, the city employees, and all the members of the media who I interact with on a regular basis. I am better having gotten to know each one of you, and my door is open for all of you. Buchanan is the greatest city in our state, and I will continue to make myself available, as I am able, to contribute to the many wonderful things our people are doing here. I still very much believe in the vision for brighter future. I will be happy to answer questions that you have and will assist in every way possible in the transition. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation. Again, it has been my pleasure to serve Buchanan and to spend time with each of you. Sincerely, Colin Rigger. So, I don't really have much to add other than, other than that, so I need to pause. I don't have much to add other than that, but it really, I really do mean that. Ambie and everyone works really hard to make up for the, the times when I'm not able to be around, but with a growing company and a young family, it's really, it's really hard to do this job very well, which I would prefer to, so I'm, I see this as getting myself out of the way for someone who maybe is retired or something like that. It might have a little more time on their hands. So, again, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to the other council members and to the media who have not crucified me once. It's been really nice, so.
I have a statement in response to Colin.
I think we all may have a statement.
Oh, boy. Do we need to do this one publicly?
About five PM this afternoon, Colin Rigger informed me of his intention to resign as our city recorder effective immediately after this evening's city council meeting. Colin is a dear friend, and I encouraged him, okay, I begged him, to reconsider his resignation or at least delay it. His decision left me speechless, and that's saying something to shut me up. I believe that this body and this organization that we all love and support are better as a consequence of his year of service as our city reporter. We haven't agreed on every issue that has come before this council, nor do I always agree with the other members of this body on the difficult and sometimes contentious matters that come before us. But let there be no doubt that there is value in disagreement and in the process of considering perspectives that vary from our own. I wish my friend the very best, and that Colin continue to dedicate himself to those things that matter most to him, to his family, to God, and to nurturing his several businesses. We all owe him our sincerest thanks for his contributions to making our excellent community even better. We know that he'll continue to share his gifts and talents to make Buchanan better in the future. After I review the proposed timetable to appoint a new city recorder with city council, Colin and I are going to enjoy a beer, perhaps two, together. Thank you, Mr. Rigger. We all value and appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
David, I'd like to be included when you guys have those beers, and I'll, and I'll buy. But I wanted to just.
Put that in your mail.
It's in there.
It's a, it's a, it's a shock, obviously, I think, for all of us sitting up here, and I've said on many occasions that I appreciate the, being the old sort of buddy-duddy on the council, I'm twice the age of, almost two and a half times the age of Mr. Rigger. But it's really encouraging to have younger people get involved in the city's process. And so, Colin, I, I wish you the best. I know you'll do well. You're very thoughtful when you, when you speak on issues. I avoid listening to the thought process there. I'm gonna miss it, and I wish you the best. And when you talk about your health, my prayers and thoughts are with you as far as your, your health and your, just your life period and kids.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
I have provided counsel, and I'll share with the press. I wouldn't say this is thrown together because it's not the first time that we have gone through this process. We did this back in 2016 when Susan Alloy was selected as our city recorder. This is a proposed timeframe that I would like us to consider. The approval of timetable by the city council would be this evening, at tonight's meeting. Item two, delivery of notice of appointed position of city recorder to the Record Delta, Intermountain, and My Buchanan Newspapers Electronic Journals by Friday, May tenth. Three, advertise in newspapers as Class Two Legal Ad on consecutive Wednesdays, May fifteen and twenty-two. Item four, deadline for letters of interest and other application materials would be Saturday, May twenty-fifth. That could either be hand-delivered to me at City Hall or at my home, as long as it's by the end of the day, Saturday, May twenty-fifth, or postmarked by mail by midnight on May twenty-fifth. Fifth, there'd be a special council meeting to review all applications on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at six PM, and to determine what applicants would be interviewed. That session would be done an executive session. Six, special council meeting to conduct interviews on Tuesday, June four, at six PM, again, an executive session. Seven, motion, announcement of appointment and swearing-in of new city recorder at the outset of the meeting on Thursday, June six, at seven PM. There could be a possible executive session before the regular open session, and ideally, if all this works the way we hope it will, Thursday, June sixth meeting, the new city recorder would begin his or her service with our city. There's an important couple of notes that come with this late-breaking news. The appointed city recorder will serve until the May twenty-twenty election, May five, twenty-twenty, is certified. That would be approximately May fifteen of 2020. Successful candidate during the May twenty-twenty election shall serve the remainder of the term for the city recorder position that was elected in 2018. That is to say, until June thirtieth of 2022. Council, it's not on the agenda, but I'm nevertheless going to entertain a motion that we approve that timetable.
Clarification, David. The, you're saying that the, this will be a one-year appointment.
That's correct.
And then, they'll run for a two-year cycle after that.
Two years and a month and a half.
Okay.
That they would file in January of 2020.
And then, we'll go into the regular cycle.
That's right. That's correct. That's correct. Give a motion. I have a motion by Mrs. Buckloo and a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question with regret. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. I guess you could. You are first and foremost, right? That is all I have for this evening, unless anybody else has anything to give to the order. I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn at eight-thirty. I have a motion by Albaugh, a second by Thomas. Discussion on the motion, no call for the question. All those in favor of an eight-thirty adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign when you stand adjourned.